Okay, good morning. Happy New Year. This is the city work session. It is Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024. Work sessions are normally held on Mondays, but we ran into holidays as we do often. We push those work sessions to the next Tuesday. Work sessions are a chance for city council and staff to go over many different agenda items that are, have been worked on by staff and are being brought to council usually for the first official time. And it allows us to ask questions and get more information. Council doesn't vote at work sessions, so there is no opportunity for a general public comment, although we oftentimes have guests who are relative to each item who might participate in the conversation. I think we have a few of those this morning. When these do come to a formal council meeting and a future for a vote, at that time, we always take public comment on each agenda item. So with that, we are going to jump right in. But note, if you're here for item C, which is a Flex Park Construction Contract Award, that item is being pushed to the end of the discussion items section. So we're gonna jump right in. We have quite a few this morning to talk about. And the first one is the 1910 Market and Restaurant Project. And I'll turn this over to Anthony Russo, who does business development for the city.
Good morning. We're gonna talk about 1910 Market Restaurant this morning? I am. Do I need to speak louder?
Do you want the applicants' part of the presentation?
Yeah, they are. I'll have them come up.
Okay.
So the 1910 Market Street project, they're coming forward for a kitchen grant. The building is the one located next to Demeret Square at Townsend and West Main. You know, that's a, that building is definitely in need of renovation and activation. And I think this is a great project for the whole downtown and the city of Montrose in general. And so on the first page here, you'll see that the ask was for initially $286,000. That was to cover all kitchen equipment, but in this case, we partially down to 160. The reason being is there were components of a prep kitchen and other items that were focused on just the market side of this. So in this building, there's going to be a restaurant, a market for retail, and then also there'll be some housing upstairs. So you have mixed-use development, which is great, something we really need downtown. Having the market will have more foot traffic coming in and out for grabbing of food, but also small bites and other things that people might want to buy. Things similar to what we would might have seen at the bistro when it was divine and had a, you know, small market up front. And then we would also have the restaurant driving in that traffic as well, which would, later on, they'll be talking about possibly having that work with square there to kind of activate that entire space, which I think is gonna be excellent. I want to go over quickly just on the revenue projections that you'll see on the following page. And I'll turn it over to the applicant. So based on the market, the food in the market, the bar, and then also restaurant food projections, these are the sales projections for the area or for the place, the establishment, you're looking at a repaying of $404,000 over a five-year period in sales taxes, which means based on the ask, we're talking about probably about a two-year window where they would actually pay back the ask, which I think is very reasonable. I think that's a great first step as far as looking at just how this will impact our community. And the other thing I just want to bring up here, which will just make sure we're aware, some of the quotes were a little bit difficult to get during holidays. And so there were some issues with some of the components here, namely the grease trap. So they did not have a full picture of what the grease trap would cost for installation. They're waiting because it's a historical building. On the historical side, they had to wait for Denver to respond on a number of different points because it's not just a local registry. We're talking about a federal and state-registered building. And so they had to get everything cleared. So there were some delays in that. So there could be an additional $20,000 to $30,000 on the grease trap that may come into play, so that would push the number from 160 to 190 on the ask. Just wanted to put that forward now, so that you guys are aware, so that when it comes before council thereon, if they do put that component in there, that would be if it's okay with you guys. So with no further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to the owners of the building.
Hang on, Anthony. I want to clarify one thing that you said. You said "they" would pay back the ask, and I think what you meant is the city's return on our investment. This is a grant, not a loan.
I apologize. When I mentioned that, for those who are not familiar with the program, we issue a kitchen grants, and the goal is for the city to be paid back through sales tax generation for that space. In this case, the $404,000 is sales tax generation that would occur over the next five years, more than covering the ask for the grant.
This is further clarification, that those items are meant to be permanent installations of the building and not something that is a owner, the owner might take home with them. These are gonna be something that if the owner moved or they change businesses, that that was taken away.
And if you look at it, for those looking at the packet at home or anyone who's interested, the items that are in here, you see a lot of walk-in coolers hood vents, HVAC systems. Things are permanently affixed to the building. It can't just easily be removed, is exactly what we're looking for, which is why we parked it down from 286 as well, down to the, now would be 190 with the grease trap installation. So any other questions for me before I turn it over to the applicant? Excellent.
Hi, good morning. If you could just tell us, introduce yourselves, just for starters. And then I don't know if Anthony told you, you know, but we'd like to hear a little bit about your business plan, a little bit about your experience, and what this grant might help you achieve.
Thank you for that question. Anthony, thank you so much for your patience through this process and our many, many, many questions. City council members, appreciate your time today. We are so humbled to be here and to be considered for this grant opportunity. I'm Lindsay. This is Dixon. I have been, our business partners are here as well. They own and operate cattle ranch up on the Cimarron. And Sarah and I went, are proud graduates of Oak Grove Elementary. We grew up here. My parents have been working in the farming community here in Montrose for all four years. My brother bought a lathe corn company, a marketing company for my dad, and we bought a little chunk of that as well. So we'll continue to operate that business. It really provides a unique opportunity for us, having a restaurant. So in the farming world, I'm sure a lot of you are aware, there's a lot of waste. I mean, semi-trucks worth of food left in fields, and that's for myriad of reasons. But it kind of created a unique opportunity for us to rework that waste. As an example, last year, we had a five-acre crop of asparagus that we did not harvest. And so if had we had the restaurant open at that time, we really would have highlighted, you would have seen asparagus in all farms in our menu, you know, filled asparagus in cocktails and asparagus soup, et cetera. And, you know, you'd see it on the market side as well. And so it really also speaks to why we want a seasonally rotating menu, just to highlight, you know, producers in the area. So in the spring, we'd have asparagus. In the summer, we would have sweet corn. In the fall, we'd highlight the rock fruits that are grown here. I guess in the wintertime, we'd have onions and a lot of steak. But, you know, of course, we have our staple menu where we'd have burgers, sandwiches, salad soups. We want to highlight some vegetarian and vegan options. Dixon and I have put a lot of sweat and tears into the recipes. Mojo's, which is a barbecue caden restaurant at Fort Collins that we've had for about 18 years, that we'd like to highlight some of those specials. Also have, do some playful things with foods and specials throughout the month, but really keep the menu pretty simple. On the market side, you're gonna see that same kind of thing where you're really highlighting producers in the area where we have fresh grab-and-go options and then frozen entrees, sides, and desserts. You know, a huge goal of ours is to really warm up that corner on Main and Townsend. We'd love to kind of refresh the landscaping, add some tables. We've talked about working with the food trucks there, so like on the summer, if they have a special on Saturdays for tacos, we could have street corn or grilled omelette corn with different kinds of spreads, just to kind of create this third-place space where people actually want to gather and hang out there. Of course, that also includes us cleaning up that east wall, get rid of those horrible awnings, paint the wall. We'd love to have a mural. We've talked about windows and doors. I understand that Larry Lucas with Dola shared a mock rendering with you all, which I'm a little disappointed by just because that we have not agreed on any plans yet. And we, of course, we know we need to talk to the city first, talk about easements, talk about use, et cetera, permits. So we made no decisions. We don't even know where we want to work with the history of Colorado. So I just kind of wanted to address that. And then the third aspect of this project is renovating the upstairs into four separate apartment buildings. So really trying to bring this whole building back to life. So for experience, I'll address that. So Dixon's been in the industry for 25 years. He's worked as a bartender, cook, you name it, to owner-operator Mojo's Bar and Grill. He's been a restaurant consultant, worked with Cisco Foods. And then here in the community, he's run the food audits, produce audits for several of the farmers here and then also a produce broker. So really the whole spectrum. For me, I have my master's degree in food science. I've been practicing as a clinical dietitian for the past 12 years. I did recently step away from the dietary director position at Volunteers of America just to put both my feet into this project. But of course, I can plan to continue to use my skill set with this business in making food that's delicious but also good for us. I mean, I think Americans have never been so confused as to what is good nutrition just because of all the misinformation out there. So hope to be a resource for the community in that way. I also have a lot of experience with recipe modification and menu planning. So I guess that brings us to why we are here today. This building is amazing. It's got a lot of character, history, but it's very, very old. And it's been neglected for decades. And so structurally speaking, plumbing-wise, electrical-wise, there is no way we could build a commercial kitchen in our building. So we're gonna have to build it on the backside. We have, as Anthony mentioned, we've had to go back to the drawing board over and over again after having discussions with our engineer, the health department, and then the history of Colorado, their standards. Right before Christmas, we did get an okay on that design, and so we should be good to go to get permits. Yeah, it has been pretty challenging working with all these different facets. I know Dixon, when he submitted his packet, it was probably over 40 pages of information for you guys. I know it was a lot. He had the P and L, the, our investments in there, what the city could expect for return on its investment if he chose to work with us. And he had even down to part-time employee benefits that we like to offer. And then Anthony mentioned that we did not include labor in any of those numbers on the first page. It is just the hard physical commitment that the city would own.
Well, it is, hang on. You would own it? Oh, you own it. But it stays in the building?
Okay.
So like if you guys, yes, exactly. I just, sometimes there's been a little confusion in the past. And so I think every time we do this, we just refine it a little bit better. So our intent is for you to own it and maintain it, not us, but for you not to move it to a restaurant in Fort Collins.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Yeah. You know, it was intimidating to kind of include our entire project just because us as partners, we're all this personality of, let's just do it. And our actions will kind of show what our intentions are. But because we wanted to apply for this grant, we did have to put a lot of things in writing. I felt a little bit vulnerable releasing some information to the public just because I don't have integrity behind my word. I'll give you guys an example. In my executive summary, I mentioned that I'd like to utilize USDA's incentive program for SNAP EBT participants, so essentially accepting food stamps at the market. And although I think this is an amazing program, I've worked with USDA before, and it is cumbersome. It'd be like a full-time job. And so I just don't know if I'm gonna be able to do this this year. And so, you know, ultimately, it's just that, is that we wanted to have integrity behind our word. We want to be good stewards. You mentioned maintaining the equipment. Dixon has an insane attention to detail. It will be very well-maintained. It'll be very well taken care of. And ultimately, just be a brand that the city is proud of. So I'll stop there. Allow questions for me and all that. Thank you so much for your time. We are very humbled.
Thank you. Yeah. Just make sure you're speaking on the mic, because the recording really, as much as the rest of us can hear you, the recording really only picks it up when we use the mics.
Easy enough. Well, absolutely. Thank you all so much for taking the time to meet with us. It really is because of this grant program that I was motivated to find a way to do something. It's been confusing, I guess, trying to understand where town would be a good place for us to have a business, which we thought about having another restaurant here when we moved here in 2017. But really, through the grant program, I'm looking to Ash and Anthony, it's been very helpful. We've been speaking on each other here, trying to get through this process. So it's really exciting to be here, and it's only because of this opportunity that we got us motivated. And what's coming so far has really felt serendipitous just to have this spot that, you know, we just really feel like, you know, privileged to be in the city and stuff. And really excited to show people what, you know, our interests are and hope it's well received. So thank you.
Thank you. Council, any follow-up questions for either Anthony or the applicant on this kitchen grant?
I just have a quick, I also have an extensive background in the food industry and also in the construction industry. And I think building an entire separate standalone kitchen is probably gonna save you an enormous amount of money and time and headache. And that, I appreciate the comprehensive plan and drawings given us. I think it gives a really good vision of what you're looking for. I want to say thank you.
One of the questions, I guess I would have to, Jim, you might have an answer for that. With the apartments upstairs, parking, are we looking at utilizing the open parking across the street or how will we be handling it?
We haven't fully identified the parking needs or a solution yet. You know, we've just entertained the idea of talking to the business consultants to us, see if we could lease space for them. But, you know, I think this project is developing. We're just kind of tackling one item by one. So we haven't gotten that far down that list yet, but here we are.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we are meeting applicants as part of our one-stop-shop process to talk about all of the items that are involved in redevelopment or rehabilitation of the site. Parking is one of those. Dees just confirmed with me that in that zone district, onsite parking for residential uses and commercial uses isn't required. But we know that the reality is we need to think in advance about those things. So I think that's tomorrow, that we're meeting with our whole department head group and development team about those questions tomorrow.
One suggestion I might make is if we could include some good lighting in the alley. That's been one of our concerns up and down Main Street and the alleyways. So hopefully we'll get something out of it, too.
Ed, I think you also.
Yeah, I had the same concerns about the parking, not just for the residents but for your customers. I know that right in front of the building is a right-hand lane. And I hear you said something about putting out chairs and that sort of stuff. And I was just curious as to how that might impact the safety of your customers based on that right-hand turn and also the parking for your customers. I understand that you're having a meeting tomorrow. It should have been nice to have that information ahead of time, so. I just don't want to put a lot of emphasis on that information.
I don't think that's relevant to the application before us. And we're gonna have to, I know you're going to have a meeting with staff to discuss these other issues, but I really think that's unrelated to the ask today. And I particularly want to compliment you on such a detailed application. And we won't hold you to every, but it was very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think Bill Bell has the data.
I just wanted to touch on a couple of those things. If we remember years ago, we were going to try to activate Demeret Park with a new mural. There's a mural on the alley side as well. And then we had the idea of food trucks coming in behind and really putting tables and chairs in. Our original visitor center location was this building. And we were gonna cut a hole in the wall and make an in-and-out kind of coffee shop experience with visitor center with seating in the park. So I think you were mentioning outdoor seating and things. It's in Demeret Park, not out on the street and taking a parking stall. So it wouldn't be anywhere near the right-turn lane or anything. It'd actually be in the Demeret Park area, which would become kind of a food court plaza type thing, which matches what the city wanted to do years ago. We just never got around to it. We also purchased the oldest store jail right down the alley, and we've never really been able to turn that into a tourist destination that we want to, to where you could come in and, possibly, we haven't talked about this at all, but I'll just throw an idea. How do they go to visitor center, get a token, go in, get access to that historic jail and see kind of a panorama type thing in there? Maybe we could work with the private side, go in to the market and get a tourist-type thing so they can walk down the alley and have a really good alley experience. So we want to do lighting. We've been needing to do that for years. This is just a reason to do some of that in our end of budget. And so I think it complements what we want to do long-term. But we really wouldn't have had a meeting in advance of today because that's more of a planning, development type of meeting. And this is more just get them going on a construction inside of the building. And then we'll work with them and massage all of those things with all of the input. We're trying to do our most customer-friendly option, like Anne mentioned, the one-stop-shop experience where you'll come in and get overwhelmed with all of us because we'll have 10 people in the room. But we're hopeful you'll leave that room with every question answered and know everything in advance, at least what to think about and what to look out for so you don't have pitfalls, even though we know there's gonna be some historically. And we already hit some of those, which will minimize the, where you have come back and forth all the time, different staff members. So that's our goal.
You know, it's a huge investment, in my opinion, that the city's making to a business. And I just wanted to make sure that they are successful. But I'm not in the habit of giving cities away and then a business who are unsuccessful and owns a building or rewarded, so to speak, with what the city has donated. So that was my main concern, parking like him and the ability to, for the business to be successful.
And I don't throw in there, too, it's important to remember the West Main project that's on right now. It's really to increase walkability of West Main. All the work and event that's going to go on that side should allow for additional parking even further down the street where someone can easily park, walk around corner, come down to this location. Because that's something we now are focused on, is trying to expand our downtown experience beyond East Main and hit that West Main side. So I think it works perfectly with the tourism side and also with the restaurant and kind of start to build a core on the side of the street, which really is going to benefit, I think, the town in general.
I think, just to be clear, some people may view this, and I'm not talking about just this application, but similar applications. Some people may look upon it as a gift. I don't think that's the way the city would look upon it. We look upon it as an investment in business in this community and a return on the investment. And the return on the investment is shown in their application of what is anticipated. Obviously, no one can guarantee that, but on rational, reasonable basis, we can believe that will occur. And so it's not a gift. It's a grant. But there is, when we look at these things, these applications, we look at the return on investment and the ROI, and this one pencils out very well. And I'm very much in favor of moving forward with this.
And our mayor is terminal, and she may be looking for a gun.
Any other comments before I close this out on this one?
It wasn't meaning that it was a gift. It's just that what I'm concerned about is a business has to be successful in order to generate sales tax. It's gonna pay for either new businesses that are coming in that were helping. And if they're not successful, then in a sense, it is a gift, you know?
I trust, I trust that they have looked at all of this, because if you look at the total dollar investment that these people are making of their own funds, this is not a win. You know, reasonably, they would anticipate that it will be successful. I don't think they would be investing this kind of money into this project, and we're only a very, very small percentage of that.
Okay. On that note, I might wrap this up into that. You know, as council, we represent this community and we respond to what we hear citizens in this community ask us for. And one thing I hear a lot is, you should make there be more restaurants downtown. We're not getting into the restaurant businesses. It's not gonna happen. We can't just sit around and wish for it. So we have come up with a kitchen grant program that has been successful, that other communities have been really impressed with when I am able to share our program with other municipalities. And it is our way of responding to our community who says to make there be more restaurants downtown. And in a way, not only to get a return on investment, which it does, but also to provide that downtown that is lively, has got stuff going on, that has things for visitors and our community to do. And I'm super excited about the possibility of activating this particular corner. And it sounds like such a great comprehensive vision. I'm really excited about it. So thank you guys very much. Appreciate you coming this morning.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is a big daily bread building asbestos abatement request. So we're gonna switch to still on Main Street lockdown, no direction, not a little building, but maybe use some help. Anthony Russo, I want to have, I guess some guests with you on this one as well?
I do, I do.
Great.
So, everyone's familiar with daily bread building. It is a staple of our downtown, a very, very important piece of our history. And I think that it's been in need for an upgrade and some love for a very, very long time. And we have now a program or a project, rather, that looks good. We've been talking about, gosh, I mean, I think it's been over a year now since we first had our dialogue. I walked in the building with them when they were looking to actually purchase it. They are looking at putting office space upstairs and then expanding out the restaurant space downstairs. What we're doing today is we're speaking specifically to the needs for asbestos remediation. So work has not been done on the building yet. They've been punching holes, trying to figure out what's needed, since they've gotten an assessment done. And the remediation will be happening very, very soon. Of note, and this is very, very important, if we choose to help and forward with this project, they've already had to put a 50% deposit down on the project prior to them being able to come here to lock in dates to actually get the cleaning, the remediation done. Right now, they are scheduled to get that remediation unless something's changed. That's still fourth. Okay, very good. So it's still fourth, so it's actually a couple of days. As you know, it's harder to get contractors to respond. It's even harder to get contractors to get out and do some work. They were able to lock this in. So we've been working on this for a very, very long time. However, this kind of happened very, very quickly as they started getting their quotes and everything given them just a few weeks back. We were able to get them put together in front of you. Unfortunately, this was the first meeting we can get to because of the holidays. So I just want to let you guys know that's kind of the situation we're looking at right now. Also of note is that this is the same company that was utilized for the Jim Elder project that was approved recently. So it's someone who has worked with the city before, just so you know that that's the accepted quote that came in, which was $30,000 cheaper than the other quotes that are available. I don't want to talk much more about the product. I'd love to tell you a bit more about the project that they've got going on. So we'll turn it over to the applicant. If you guys have any further questions for me?
Any questions for Anthony before we get from Anthony? Okay, thank you. So welcome to our city council work session. If you could please introduce yourself to us and just tell us a little bit about your project. That would be great.
Well, thank you guys so much for having us here today. My name is Craig Casso. This is my mom, Terry Alexander. We currently are co-owners of DeVito's Italian Restaurant in Delgado and Pottery Restaurant in Montrose. I also have a trucking company. We work for United States Postal Company. We deliver the mail pretty much in most all mountain towns in the western slope. This project came up to us pretty quickly last year. We had to kind of move on it. And then, and then once we did, we had to decide what we were gonna do. With that being said, the building is in pretty structurally good shape, I would say. It needs a lot of work. And so that was, when we started, we had the remediation tested on that, and there's quite a bit of asbestos in it, to the point where we really don't know what the inside of the walls look like without having removed. And know the condition of the brick, the condition of the wood floors. So that was why we kind of moved forward first, to get the remediation done so we have a better picture of what we're gonna get ourselves into and cost-wise of things, so.
That's spoken.
So I have a bachelor's degree in construction management. I have an old college buddy right here next to me.
We'll hold that against you.
All right, from Fort Collins. We've done several other construction projects. We have just built an Airbnb in Selton, Colorado, a couple of years ago. So I know, we know what we're getting ourselves into. My mom is owner of Alexander Burn Construction Company. We did commercial hotels. A little bit, say, a little bit for a whole much. So this is not something new to us. The extensive, the remodeled part is a little bit, but not much much, so.
Great. Thank you. Council, what kind of questions or concerns or issues do you want to talk about?
I just want to say that normally when we see these asbestos mitigation programs come to us for assistance, it's a single floor or a large room or a single item. And this one is three floors. And I'm looking at the proposal and the evaluation, and it, I would say, in my opinion, based on our prior experience, that this bit not out of line with some of the other mitigation programs we've seen. The extensive nature of this changes that metric a little bit. But I think that that's one of the things that we have established a pattern as city council for the public health and safety of asbestos mitigation. And that I think is one of those worthwhile projects for our community.
Just to be clear, make sure I understand correctly, this is really the first step in moving forward with this old building? And while anticipated to use the upstairs for offices and downstairs as a restaurant, nothing definitive in that regard has been?
Nothing, I would say a hundred percent definitive, but that is definitely the direction that we're going with.
On that end of the table, any comments or questions?
I'd just like to comment. I think it's great we're getting additional construction downtown area, right housing. And it's been one of our long-term goals is to increase, and we're focused living downtown to help improve our business district, and I think that's great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It's exciting to see these old buildings get rehabbed, reused. I know sometimes it might even be deeper to tear them down and start anew. And yet, it is what makes Montrose, Montrose our main street and these historic structures. And the caretakers who take on projects like this, we thank you. And I think this is the part that the city can do on behalf of our community to make sure we keep a vibrant historic town. So thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much for that.
Good luck.
Okay, we did move item C to the end of the agenda because Scott wasn't here. Can we, do you want to keep it at the end? Because I said that. Okay, then, no one left when I said we're leaving it to the end. So I think we'll go ahead and just do it in order then have that, so it matches up in the future if anyone's watching the recording. So next up would be the Flex Park Construction Contract Award. And our city engineer, Scott Murphy, is gonna go through that.
So memo should be in your packet. I'll just run through it real quick. So this is for the construction contract of the Colorado Forest Flex Park. The total contract amount, 424, which includes the construction product at about $400,000 and entering sports survey at an amount of $24,000. So to help orient everybody, it actually turned out there was a figure missing from the, from the memo, so the next one will have it. But you guys are most, are, I think, right here, we can talk through where at that. So the new flex buildings in Colorado Doors that kind of run north-south, at the southern end of those is Bright Beginnings and Flex Ray. Just south of that is Colorado Year, and then obviously, between it and the river is the Monca Riverway Trail that we recently constructed and the new public restroom. All of those kind of coalesce along with the master plan for Colorado Doors to have a small kind of neighborhood park in the area. You know, for residents, for rest area kind of along the, it started out kind of the rest area along the trail and the trail restroom. And then as Colorado Doors developed, we now have a daycare and a recreation, or the rec district center with some of their programming for their Flex Rec highlight area. Kind of all coalesce to make this on the surface to do, to actually construct this park now. Along those lines, the city pursued a grant from Colorado Health Foundation to help with this park and was successfully receiving $350,000. And I would mention that that geared towards the park and the Marotta, which I'll mention here in a minute. But healthy financial contribution towards a project that's overall only, you know, $430,000. So with that, we moved, once we were awarded the grant, to move forward on detailed design of the park itself, put it out to bid. We received two bids, and I was actually really happy to get two, which is, all right, landscapers are really busy. Of all the trades, landscaping, electrical seem to be the most busy. And when people are busy, prices reflect that. The general contractor in this case is Skip Houston, who's worked with us on Anderson Road. They did the South Third Plaza as well. And then their main landscaping sub is Rainmaker, which is kind of trusted in the community. Done a great job on a lot of jobs. So trusted team, and yes, surprisingly, a good price as well. Within the packet is an overview of the park to kind of show what it's gonna look like. The idea is to get all main kind of backbone of the park. It's supposed to be the parking, the ADA access, a turf, underground conduits. A lot could be added at a later date, and then turf. What this does is kind of sets it up for if they want to add, trying to see how it's used, see what the needs are, let it come more forward. You can pretty easily add, there was talk like playboulders, small play structure, gazebo, big structures, things of that sort. Kind of just creates the blank slate for that to be added at a later date if desired. Or if it is fine and it's kind of simple state, works well for the, you know, for the public,[1515.90] but for daycare or rec centers programming, you know, I think they envision some, you know, yoga classes outside to kind of complement their operations. We shall see. And let's see, moved on to the schedule. So they would start here in soon after awards, so probably in February. It won't really affect the winter too bad. So if it's really cold, it'll wait a little bit, but start as soon as they can and scheduled to be open by the fourth of July. As the plan is, the main park, the center is odd, so it can be opened relatively quickly. We don't have to wait and try and keep people off of it while the grass takes. On the financial, oh, and then no, it's kind of behind the flex buildings there, so really no traffic impacts. The contract management will be done by our department with support from Parks Department or the design engineers need. Funding, we budgeted a hundred thousand to go on top of Colorado Health Foundation three fifty for a little four fifty. So that does place this product under budget as it currently stands. And one thing I will mention is there is a separate item for the Marada itself. So we've got the exhibits completed, the appraisal is underway to secure the Marada site. And then we have budgeted this year to do the improvements kind of for preservation site and get all the store pieces and stuff in place. And the last thing I'll say about is maintenance. So with kind of the, one of the partnerships on this was with the rec district. If you notice in the recent IGA for our annual maintenance contract with the rec district, this park was listed, so as long as they are in the Flex Rec building, our Flex Building with their Flex Rec program, they intend to do the kind of routine maintenance of the park. So the city would remain the owner and if the rec district were to move out, it would become, would fall back to the city. But as long as they're there and in that facility right next to it and using it for their programming, they have agreed to do maintenance on it. So that'd be, you know, kind of routine spring, our maintenance mowing, water, things of that sort.
What's the term of the lease?
I think it's got another three years, four years.
Four years.
I know, happy to answer you quick. Oh, yeah, and the land, yeah, that's important. So the other part of this, the land itself is about a half acre being donated by the Drago's that's mentioned here. And the land value is about three hundred and fifty thousand. Between the windows published and now we've gotten a formal appraisal, we guessed three fifty and it came in at three fifty. So that will be coming before us, the city is accept that donation. And we've secured it through an O A that, you know, so we're, we're good. It's secure, so we can move forward with park project. But there is some counseling on that because we essentially accept that donation and filed out the IRS form to go with it for the contribution from, I think in this case, Black Mountain Capital, which is the, the Drago's Land Group for Colorado Outdoors.
I have a couple of questions. So does that mean that technically this half acre is owned by the city of Montrose and is designated, we have to zone it?
Probably, yeah, probably just going to zone it over to the after donation. And it's, uh, yeah, owned by the city of Montrose with a deed restriction, has to be a park. So we can't take it and turn, you know, something out of their control.
Sure.
So it keeps them secure that way.
Okay. My other question is really simple. That I see a trash can receptacle and I wonder if this is in a good location too. And I don't know if we currently as a city do a lot of pet poop bag stations, but it seems like to be a good location for that where the trash receptacle is already in. And secondly, since it is twenty-nine thousand, twenty-six thousand dollars under budget, would we want to do some ad alternates for boulders now if the landscape company is on site? Or are we really waiting to see how it's used since it's called a Flex Park? And we're not quite sure. It just seemed like that would be a good opportunity now to spend that last twenty-six on some climbing boulders or something.
Yeah. So the, he's pushing on the poo bags. So yeah, those are something that we just kind of keep in parks and distribute as necessary. So that's an easy thing. I haven't really thought about it yet. Yeah, I think we agree that's probably a good location for it by the trash can there. So that's something easily, make sure it is incorporated. As far as being under and wanting to add, you know, the project started out a little smaller to begin with, the budget was conservative just to make sure we were comfortable with prices doing what they're doing. So we were comfortable kind of starting with this and then seeing what maybe, if we want to put something in that may hinder how it ends up being used for programming or with the children. And it is set up easy enough to do, you know, the next kind of add, and there's potential brands that are going after it, that the Drago's are working on, you know, border priority lighting, picnic and gazebo, and then some additional perimeter fence possibly.
Sure.
Were kind of the flow ones. As far as, you know, what goes in, what gets used, like when they were thinking boulders, they were thinking those, the style they're making, that's what they use at the rec center.
Oh, yeah.
Those kind of things, climbing things. But that kind of gets into, well, how's it, what does the neighborhood want and how do they use it? And those get pretty expensive. So we wanted to kind of crawl, walk around with this one, especially with kind of some of the budget constraints on another projects in the net. You know, others are sellers going over, so it kind of, they want to push our luck.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense.
Regardless of how it's used, is lighting an ultimate objective?
Depends on if they do the program at night. You know, a lot of parks, you know, the parks themselves are generally closed at dusk and not used. And so, and there's enough, there is a fair amount of light off the back of the flex buildings. So again, we're kind of waiting to see if it's warranted. Traditionally, our parks are not, the parks themselves are not lit because they're generally closed at night and not used.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up is MD Montrose City Hall facade design update and presentation.
Excuse me. If you folks don't want to stay here for the rest of the meeting, you're certainly going to stay here for the rest of our presentation.
It's also non-urgically.
Please go through.
Thank you. Yeah, it's squeaky and the floor is loud, but yeah.
Get out, please.
Thank you.
We're just getting to the good stuff.
Yeah. And it's, it's just see folks from Life Company here, Life Group here. Hang on one sec, because it's still noisy, people moving around.
There's a glass back and get to you.
Yeah. Hang tight for, hang tight for two minutes. Well, yeah, I think, and they still have to bill. Give us a second here. Reset button. Thanks, Andy. It's just about to start and there's a lot of water. Okay, hang on. Yeah.
You know, it seemed like there were, must have had on that it was a good program and had, I don't think a lot of follow-up questions. We had an opportunity to ask a question. I think the time thing was, I don't want to take the load on that. So I'm going to say yes, we can ask. But we can add to the agenda every night. Really?
I mean, we should have noticed, but we didn't care about that.
Okay. I'll leave it to you to figure it out. Thanks. Okay. So next up, we are going to talk about the City Hall facade design update and presentation. And it's nice to see our friends, the Life Group here to give us that update. But I'll turn it over first to our local district chairman, Chad, who is managing this project.
Yeah, good morning, Council. I'll get started and then I'll hand it over to the experts here and they'll talk through our design progress we've made. So this is about City Hall, project on Main Street. We are currently in design phase for facade renovation of that, or we've been calling it phase three. Today, Life Group, which is Peter Reisnagle and Chen Power, our, our whole team this year. So we have FCI, Don and Riley with Dymick. They'll be involved in the next item on the agenda as well. But, so we have a lot to talk on this project today. But we'll be talking about material types and colors that we've been selected for the project and, and the stage of design that we're at now. So what's called development, which is that stage of where we're putting colors and material types in, but also is a stage that we can put accurate cost estimates to the project. And that's what we do for the next item in the agenda. But it's a significant milestone and also is worthy of renderings and presentations. So that's why we're here today. And, and also allows for, this stage of design is, allows for accurate cost estimates from subs, so they can insert, plan the work. And so anyway, we'll be talking to all of that through this presentation. But with that, I will hand it off to Peter and Chen to explain more about design.
Good morning. I'm Peter Reisnagle. It's good to see you all again. Thanks, Jim. For the first workday of the new year, this is a great place to be. I was looking forward to this. So thank you for having us again. And we're excited to share some of the things we've been working on, on the building over there. As far as we know and everything we've heard, the phase one and two, part of the project and moving into the building over there at, on Main Street. So we're now just a little further down Main. You know, the first couple of things on the agenda this morning were a little bit west of us and so, so happy to continue. But the phase one and two, we think went rather well and move in is great. We, we on the design side, we're really happy with those phases of, of the project. And so we're, we're happy to, to help in phase four, or excuse me, phase three. And I, I know people are really going to miss the way that, that building looks. It's, I get this at every time that it can't happen fast enough, but here we are. So you can, this is a rough schedule we have up there. You know, and, and right now we're in that third item where we're, we're, we kind of finalized the design development of the budget and then we've gotten updated numbers. And so here we are presenting to, to you all. We will be continuing into the construction document phase as well as construction in twenty-four, assuming, assuming everything's a go. Okay. So let's, uh, let's just remind, you know, we, we looked at this and we kind of wish we could just rebuild this building there. You know, it's been a prominent intersection for a long, long time. And so it's, it's pretty cool to be able to put such a key city function back at that location. But that, that old building that was there was, was really cool. And it's obviously been changed many, many times over the years. And I think the next one has a, that's, I don't, I don't know why you guys want to change it. But, but here, here we go. Yeah. So this is, you know, it's obviously still a prominent intersection. The building stands out a little less now than it did in that older photograph. But what we're going to get into today is looking at a little bit of what it's, what it's going to look like. And so, you know, historically in this, in this area, we, we, we actually pulled some cues from your previous City Hall building in what we'll be showing you on the design with the, the arch at the entrance, some of the stone elements, the signage and having some site features out front. We'll, we'll update you on that. We actually came across an issue with the grading in front of the building, which you wouldn't think is an issue, but there's actually a lot of slope on that sidewalk that's, that's out front there now. And so we've been able to use that as a opportunity to create a, a nice design feature at the front, we'll, we'll, we'll say, and comply with ADA. That's what, that's where we're headed with that. So just as a reminder, this, this is what we showed you, I think, yeah, almost a year ago, ten, ten months ago or so, this was our initial concept that we had put together to help Jim and his team put together a rough budget to get the project started. And so we took, we, we had this just as an initial idea and then we took a lot of feedback, both from city council members and city staff and, and if you, some of you were, I think were at that workshop we hosted in this room a while back. And that, that was, that, okay, now I'm going to wait while all of you read all of those notes. But you can, you can see that in the green circles, you know, we went through a lot of different options and ideas on the building and, and landed on some pretty strong direction in that workshop, which was great. We, we really appreciated the time and the effort that folks put in and it, and it really helped us move, move in a direction that I think is going to be very successful. So this is our current elevations. So as we, you know, moved from the initial concept into, into the current design, you can see a lot of, a lot of the similar kind of things that we started with, but also some of those elements I was talking about on your old City Hall, the arch at the entrance, the sign above the door, which is not going to be wood letters this time. We're gonna, we're gonna make it out of brass, but it'll, it'll still be a, a nice looking traditional kind of sign above, above the front door there. And we're also showing some, some items on the west, what we're calling the west elevation, which is the middle one there. The ability to attach artworks to the wall. You can see those little squares there next to the windows as a steel plates embedded in the masonry that, that will be able to do some art displays, or it could be a mural wall, or, you know, we're, we're not making that decision for you all, but it's, the opportunity is there. So, and then the alley, you know, the, the lighting in the alley was mentioned earlier and we, we get that and agree. You know, this, this project, the bottom image there, we're doing some improvements to the alley. Not the full scope that we originally started with. We all decided to reduce that. But we've got the main staff entrance there and some improved lighting as well as a kind of a refresh to that, that facade of the building. It'll remain as, as stucco the way it is, but new windows and, and some new lighting for sure.
And the parking will remain where it is in the, in the rear?
It, it will, yeah. Underneath the overhang there, yeah. Yeah, good question. Probably have to put, you know, special electrified signs that keep non-city staff from parking there now or something, you know, and just get everybody else out of there. But no, it's, it's, it's been a, it's been free parking for a long time. So I think there was a, there was a learning curve there for, for folks who don't work at the City Hall. You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Shannon do some speaking now. I've, I've gone beyond my, my slides here, so.
Yep. Just make sure you've got the mic right in front of you, Shannon, because although we can hear you really well, the recording won't pick you up unless you're speaking right into that mic.
I've been known to yell quite a bit, so that's, that's one of my strong suits. Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I know, I think we, what's been great about the design features is, you know, both the design team and also the city staff being excited about that main entrance. So keeping that there. And that little wing wall right on Main and Cascade is actually, it's a, it was an addition at one point in time. So we're able to open that, that up and create another little area for art to kind of be in a little enclosed area there. We'll raise the whole floor up so there's not like a, a spot to hide or anything there. And then, yeah, that, that art wall along the southwest there, I think will be very fun. And then making sure that our staff feels like they, they have a good main entrance in there for sure. So we're keeping with our, our brick materials and stone because those are classic and long lasting. And then we'll use some metal panels, some small accent areas here to kind of break it up and get a nice rhythm for downtown. And yeah, and then we're, we're getting adds new windows, which is of course going to be wonderful to bring in lots of natural light. I think that lobby has the skylights in there, which makes it feel really nice, but making sure the finance department and then our planning department along the west side and also the city manager and HR area get that natural light for sure. And then we'll be updating those windows along the south side. We're going to keep with that stucco, which is a very typical downtown material along the alleyway. But we'll alter the windows a little bit because I don't think they're in the best shape right now. So we'll be able to, to do that. And yeah, I mean, we've had a really great year talking with all of you and Anne's been helpful, both been helpful. Jim's been great and just making sure that we're getting the, the points across for sure, including visibility into the lobby. And I'm just, I'm very grateful for everyone's enthusiasm about adding art along the building too. I think it'll look great. Yeah, so Peter alluded to it earlier. We're working with Delmont. They're, they're fantastic. They know the downtown area very well. They're our civil engineers. Yes, we have this intense cross slope along the front there. So we love the pavers downtown. We're planning on bringing some more of that on the very northwest corner. And then, you know, we heard from the city that those pavers actually really help with ice management and they're very easy to maintain. So why not put them at the main entrance? So you can kind of see in that elevation in the, the top left that the gray kind of ground kind of has like a little bit of a wave to it. So we have a ramp, we have our main entrance, which is nice and flat and easy to get to. We'll actually have some steps going down to the curb there. We'll be able to put some little seat walls in here and you'll see this a little bit better in a 3D view here soon. It's actually really, and then ramps on each side that those seat walls are encapsulating. And it really kind of creates this like cool wave and, and kind of announces that entrance while still keeping it easily to walk by, keeping the pedestrian friendly nature of everything. And this was kind of a wonderful design thing that we discovered that actually created a really cool feature. So, yeah, credits to the team for sure. So, yeah, you can see it comes some, some 3D views as we were working through things. Just as we, as we start to talk about materials and colors and things, we're kind of having that sandstone look. That's part of the city of Montrose wayfinding. When we, when we have our stone veneer base along the base of the building, I want to actually see if we can use a sandstone because that'll just look really cool and, and part of that pattern language. We, by chance, we already have dark framed windows on the building, which happened to correspond with the Montrose PD. So when we start talking about kind of the civic campus, looking as it's kind of, you know, all part of the same entity, we are able to continue our nice dark framed windows. And of course, the, the brick and using a nice, like simple, modern way to articulate the facade for sure is a pretty, a direction we're going here. So colors always are a little bit wonky on the computers, but we do our best and we have the physical samples here that draw inspiration. But here's kind of what we're thinking about. And you can see at the, the front entrance here, we have our little ramp and seat wall area here with some handrails to get you up from the curb. We will put some nice big concrete blocks along the street to make sure that any trucks or anything don't hit those seat walls for sure. And then, yeah, I think just as a, a design team, we're kind of going between, you know, what color do we make those? This could be fun either way. Let's, let's, let's see what, what makes sense, given that, you know, we have all these awesome corner features with the exist, ooh, campus as it, as it goes. So, yeah. So, yeah, so we have two same, 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 and please skip if you'd like to look at it all, same color brick. One just has a grain texture to it, again, kind of giving a little bit of subtle interest on the facade. We did something similar on the police department, which I think looks really great. Have our dark framed windows. We're going to try see if we can put like a cool bronze patina on some handrails just to kind of, so they're not just silver. Our brass lettering, brass lettering, I think really like the, the palette, the kind of brushed look on here, but maybe we're going to do the cool like prismatic face just because it, it gives it that really classical look. But I think these would look good for the first day, the shininess, and then it would start being pretty dusty. So we'll go with the brass for sure because we want it to look good for years to come. And then our metal panels, which are really a nice subtle part of the rhythm of the facade there.
Those are the, the metal panels are up on the top?
Yeah. Point to the metal panels.
Yeah, yeah. So, yep, the gray here and the gray here. And actually, and then right below that here, we're actually going to keep one of those C channels that's in on the facade right now.
What's a C channel?
Sorry, this big steel and they're the shape of the, the scene, they're painted white, but we will paint them a different color.
You don't even know they're there, no?
Yes, yeah. But what's nice, I mean, it's, we're able to use as, as part of our wall assembly there and then continue to do kind of the, the column and storefront with a, with a steel channel above here, which is really a downtown aesthetic that, you know, we see everywhere[1493.45] which is really a downtown aesthetic that, you know, we see everywhere there. So, yeah.
Are all of those windows new or are we able to retain and keep any of the windows?
Yeah, so with our FCI team, we're going to keep all the framing for it, but we're going to change out the glazing. Except for the, we can kind of see the duller ones up there. So, this, it's not, you can't see through the glass. It's called a spandrel panel that's painted. Those are existing. Yeah, the ceiling is right at that, that first horizontal mullion there. So, yeah, we're going to keep that in place and there's insulation above that. So, we're just, we'll make sure that it's in good shape, but.
But the panes themselves will be replaced.
The panes themselves will be replaced, yeah.
So, would you be adding like an argon filled triple pane or doing something more energy efficient?
I, I'm sure it will be more energy efficient than what's there.
Wouldn't take much.
Yeah, no, but the, the, the main goal honestly is to make it a little more visible because right now it's really dark. And so, the, all of this, to your question, Mayor Bynum, all of this large frame is existing to remain. But we're talking about replacing just some glass in the, in the vision lights.
I love that we're, we're getting a really new look, but we're able to retain as a, as a cost-saving measure. We're able to retain stuff as well because that was a concern of council that we didn't want to spend so much money that we were just redoing everything and to hold on to what we could.
And the, the other windows are new, as you know, it's some big blank walls here at the east end, on the north side of the east, the east end on the north side, as well as the, the west end. So, we are adding windows to those office spaces.
Right, and you talked a lot about the benefits from the interior of those windows. But is it going to help as people walk by on the exterior to make it not just feel like, like what's the, how do windows impact the pedestrian experience?
I suppose typically you're window shopping, so I don't know if Archie really likes that.
I think one of the, one of the concerns has been with staff sitting in there and feeling like people are standing there staring in at them. And also, it would be a concern in the evenings when you have lighting inside and a star or outside that you don't reverse that, that visibility piece so that they stand there and look at you at night, but they can't see them during the day. Is that?
As, as staff, we like this idea. There's, there's a variety of reasons. And I've been working with Shannon a lot on talking about this and Riley's given us a lot of help too and Peter, of course. But, you know, from my viewpoint, as a pedestrian, when you walk by right now, you walk by glass that is, it's not entirely reflective, but most times during the day, it feels like it. And so, as a pedestrian, you're accustomed to go walking along and window shopping, just like Shannon said, and having an engaging experience as you walk on Main Street. And then you get to our building right now and it is like a dead zone. There's nothing to look at. And people, you might feel even inclined to turn around and think your shopping is done, no matter which way you're coming from. So, this variety of windows and being able to see into the space to a degree will make it feel, one, engaging as you're walking by and also for our city hall, transparent to the public. So, we are not hiding what we're doing behind dark, dark glass. This is everyone's city hall in our community and we have some ideas for how to mitigate what you just mentioned with at night. It gets dark before we're done working and so it can feel like a fishbowl, but we'll have some nice, I use the wrong word sometimes, shades, not blinds, shades, that people can pull in, in the case that they need that. But this will have, I think, even more positive impact for the look of our Main Street than even how our staff will experience it. I'm really excited about this part. We contemplated keeping some of the existing glass and Peter and Shannon really reminded us that, you know, we're starting with some new windows. We wanted those to be transparent, more transparent. And to keep this old dark glass next to our new glass was not advised by our fine architects here. So, that's another reason why you'll see that they're replacing it is so that it'll all match and look nice. But, but we started saying like, well, we'll just keep the old and then the new will be see-through. And they were like, you're, you want to, your building to look good. So, thanks for the advice on that.
Thanks for that.
Do it, do it right. That's a good choice.
And the interior blind shades, interior window treatments, are, are those part of our scope on this facade? Or I just want to make sure that, not so much for the budget sake, but just that we don't build all these windows and then next year we're like, oh, we got to go source some shades.
No, it'd be all part of the one process.
Okay, good.
I think just the benefit of the natural light in the workspace is worth every penny we spend on that because the, the experience of our employees being able to have natural light, the, just the effect on the attitude of employees is immeasurable.
Absolutely, and you all know, but, and sorry, I'm not trying to steal the show, but these new windows that are going on the finance department, those are the windows that light that entire portion of the building really. And so, there are office spaces, they're adjacent to the next door building that won't have any windows. And so, making these windows larger and let in a lot of light really helps with that entire side of the building too.
Because their offices are glass, so it doesn't just light, light into the office, it lets light in.
Exactly, because yes, their interior wall is glass and so it'll let light into the offices that don't have exterior windows.
The other thing I'll mention to that, that question, these, the, the new windows there on the east end for the finance area, the bottom light is actually not see-through. It'll be, it'll be translucent where it'll let some, some light through, I think, is where we land. Or is it spandrel? Spandrel, okay. But, but that was for the right proportion on the outside, but, but to help address the concern. So, the, the sills on those windows inside are actually pretty high. So, as you're walking by, it'll, it'll feel like a storefront, but you, you can't, you can't really see the people in, in there. On the other one, where we've got the big, the big existing windows that we're wanting to make more transparent, there's actually, you, you can't really tell in this image, but where the offices are, there's actually a physical barrier down here. You know, that, that building has a planter wall. We're, that, that's what we're using to, to do this facade with the, the columns that pop out. So, it definitely won't prevent people from looking into that office, but at least there's a little bit of a physical barrier there to prevent people from exactly to, you'll probably get more preening in the windows than you will. People are trying to see in, you know, it's just how it goes. But the building will definitely be less Darth Vader-esque and more like Luke Skywalker.
So, Peter, so Peter, we retain that space, that physical space between where people are walking and where the, the building is. Are we going to use it as a planter or are we going to, what, what is that going to look like?
No, it's, I mean, the, we've just been referring to them as, as seat walls.
Okay.
But there's, there's a big metal pan in there with old drains and things that's all going to come out. And it'll just be a stone cap. So, it'll be your stone cap along, along there. And your columns will die down and do what they need to do on the foundation there. Yeah, so, and then also the seat walls out by the entrance too. Those are just going to be a nice stone, stone cap so that, you know, all the landscaping efforts are on the corners and the trees and all those other things.
Similar to what's around Old City Hall.
Yes, very much so, yeah, for sure, yeah. And yeah, it's, you know, it's, the, the window shades on the inside of the windows, I know it's sort of like a, you might say like level three air, like protection type of thing, but that's, I think, the, the patchwork risk of having different glazing types on one building. Because we wouldn't want to put the Darth Vader back in. It would, yeah, would be, would not be great, but having the control from each occupant with their window shades is, is probably the, the best scenario we can, we could ask for.
I think, well, maybe the other concern is if we don't update the glazing on the, all the windows, we'll have to eventually come back and replace glazing on individual windows. And anybody that's done remodeling knows that the cost of redoing it is a lot more than doing it right the first time.
Right, yeah, and, and we'll work with that existing frame, right, to make sure that our glazing fits, fits within there. And we have a very talented team of contractors and subs that do a great job.
Again, like I said with the kitchen grant, you know, the five of us represent this community and what we hear and what we know people are concerned about from our conversations on a daily basis to our community survey, emails we receive, our public comment. And ever since we mentioned buying this building as a new city hall, I know I, I'll speak myself, have heard numerous comments about making it look better. And so, this is exciting that we're moving in that direction.
That's beautiful.
And there's a flagpole.
And there's a flagpole. Fantastic. So, switch back again between the color of that seat wall real quick. I kind of like that. I kind of like the dark.
Yeah.
For what it's worth. You know, you guys are the efforts on design, but.
I like the dark one.
If you were looking for a tie-breaking vote there, you have council's opinion. We don't vote. We're just nodding. Okay.
Opinions are welcome.
Take it any way you want.
Appreciate it.
Any other things we need to know at this point about the, the project?
No, we, I feel like we get to talk, but really it's the whole team together. So, thanks for everyone for getting us here to today.
You guys have done a nice job.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, well, leave this up. We're next. The next-gen item is very much related, so it may, may be more involved.
Perfect. Then we'll go straight into the next item, which is the Montreux City Hall Facade Project CMGC Contract Award Recommendation. And turn it back over to Jim Shine.
All right, so this is next step. We're at this stage of design, like I said, we can start to begin the construction process and definitely the procuring of long lead time items.
Thank you, Peter. Use the mic.
Thank you.
Sorry. And, and getting subcontractors contracted so that we can start to tie them down as that's become, you know, harder, I would say, in the last, you know, few years. So, that's what this portion or this agenda item is for, is to authorize the construction portion of the project, which would include an amendment to FCI's existing CMGC contract to amend in the construction value of the project. So, because we're at this stage of design, we've been able to estimate all of that, including the, the construction piece of it, as well as the owner expenses in the project. And that's where the overall authorization request comes from. So, and so, FCI has been involved in this design process pretty much from the beginning and, and getting several different iterations of input from subcontractors and also their input from a constructibility standpoint and materials. We've talked a lot about how we are going to do this and that's kind of leads into the window conversation that we wouldn't want to do it later because this will be difficult. It's an operating city hall. There's a lot of staff, a lot of public use the building. So, how do we rip the front off and keep it, keep it working? We definitely wouldn't want to come back two years down the road and do it again by taking those windows out again. So, it's definitely the time and also as it came into, you know, looking at the cost of it, the cost of that glass was actually relatively low. So, that's also kind of what led into an item that we recommend doing now is because the cost is low and the impact is huge. So, anyway, FCI has, is at the point where we've estimated the design development stage of, of the design and are able to provide a GMP, which is what we can amend into their contract. So, again, we feel like that this is a, a good stage of that. We've done it on other projects at this stage. There are some unknowns still. There are, you know, we are working on a historic downtown building that we've done quite a lot of investigation and removed a lot of the facade to see what's underneath. But we're still working on a remodel project. So, there's quite a level of unknowns. Some of the design isn't finished, so even in some of the structural design, we are waiting on some of the last components of, of that to really put a complete package together. In those cases, there's been different levels of, of things included in the estimate. So, whether it be a contingency or an allowance for certain, certain items within their GMP and as well on the owner's side, there's an owner's contingency included in there as well. All this is detailed out in the charts included in the packet. But, but not to say that it's all been thought through, that we've really looked at covering each type of contingency and allowance. And as this type of contract, as those are not spent, so if we are, we do not need the contingencies or allowances, those are simply not spent. So, it is not a lump sum style of project. This is for work performed. So, if an allowance, if there's no unknowns and we are able to retain the contingencies, then it simply is unspent. It stays as a city fund and does not get paid out. Benefit of doing this, this now, again, is to get subcontractors locked in. I think that's one of our, there's a couple of long lead items that we want to get procured soon to make this available for construction, starting, we're looking at end of April, beginning of May is kind of our target right now. One reason is for procuring those long lead time items, but also in scheduling it with our contractors. So, FCI has, is working on other projects as well and, and needing to fit this into their schedule. So, we're targeting May at this point. And so, speaking towards the difficulty of, of operating while doing this project, we, we intend to maintain a full-time access from the public through the front, the main entrance. And we can do a lot of different things. We'll be building a tunnel likely over that for safe access. There'll be a pedestrian safe zone across the front of the building. And then we'll coordinate some of the work on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays when our city hall is not open. Again, to allow some of that work that needs to be done that would prevent access from the public. So, all those things are being thought through and I'd say it's a difficult part of the project. I think we've really challenged FCI with that portion of it, of allowing it to be fully functional throughout construction. There will be laydown areas around the building, losing most of the parking area around the building at certain times. We'll try to keep that as minimal as we can, but just from a construction standpoint, we're likely going to be using the parking areas. So, as we move into the, the budget portion of the project, so again, there's a couple of charts in the packet explaining this, but the overall budget is just over 3 million, 3.05 million. And that came from a few different pieces, one being the capital project, 2.7 million. But also, we needed to replace the banner poles across Main Street. Actually ended up being quite an extensive project. It needed micro piles for foundations for those, which we have to do for the facade. So, we combined these together to why we're doing, using the same contractors at the same time to do that work. So, that was in addition, as well as the windows on the backside of the building, those, we knew when we purchased the building, those windows needed to be replaced. It was something that we budgeted through our facilities division. And so, anyway, there's several items that were combined there to come up with the, the total budget. And our overall expenses are also detailed out there. And as you can see, we're under budget. That's a, another great, a great thing to be able to say during these times that I think we're significantly under budget. We did include a substantial owner's contingency. I would say, you know, between 10 and 15% is what we would see depending on the project. Again, this is a renovation, so there's just some, you know, unknowns associated with that. We're kind of able to stay out of, like on the PD project, we had a lot of unknown soil, unknown and unsuitable soils that, that caused a huge cost. Where in this project, we likely won't have that. The amount of work we're doing foundation-wise is very minimal. But again, we're opening up a historic building, so we're not exactly sure what we're going to find. So, felt like 12% contingency is a, a healthy amount and, and safe. And again, if it's unspent, it's unspent. And so, with that, I was, we're asking for the, the full authorization of the $2.83 million for the overall project, which would include an amendment to FCI's contract of 2.42 million. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Their construction contract includes their, their contingency and their, just blanked on the word, like their costs of?
Yes, allowances, yes. So, there's both within their price, so within that 2.42 million, there is a construction contingency, very typical for lots of different construction contracts, and an estimating contingency still, because until contracts are awarded to subs, there is a chance pricing could change. We are seeing less of that now than we did a couple of years ago, so we feel a little bit better about that. It's relatively low contingency held within the FCI's contract amount. And then there are a couple allowances and those are also small. They are for things related to the foundation design. When we, what they've estimated is what we're assuming is going to happen. And once we get the final foundation design, they'll be able to finalize that. So, there's an allowance of, there's a couple in there, I would think, for 10,000. So, they're relatively small in the overall amount. But those, again, if they're, if they're not used, then they are just not paid to FCI, even though they were within that 2.4 million.
Right.
So, it'll just be coming to us in a couple of weeks?
Yes.
Yep.
So, two weeks we'll probably be seeing this.
That's right, yep. We'll be coming to a council meeting in two weeks for approval.
Thank you.
Good job.
Doesn't look like we've got any other questions on that one. Thanks very much. Okay, next up, we have a deed of easement authorization for the Rathbone Hotel. This is also your item, Mr. Shad.
Thank you, Peter. Yeah, you can take it. All right, yeah, I'll keep, I'll keep going until you guys tell me to stop.
And you can keep going, but I will thank the folks from FCI, Dynamic and Blythe for being here. And please feel free to, to leave whenever you want. You don't have to stick around for the whole meeting.
Yes, thank you, guys.
What should we do with samples? Do they, can, can we keep them and look at them for a little while? Or take, we could take a couple of seconds right now so that then you can take them with you. How about that? Okay, why don't we just take a quick break? Anyone can use the facilities and we'll check out the samples and then Blythe can take them with them. Got a lot of stuff still to do. Okay, if we were at the theater, the lights would be blinking, asking you to wrap up your conversations and head to your seats.
Do you think anybody heard you?
I'm not too worried about it yet. The general idea. Okay, thank you for that little intermission. That was great. We are going to continue on with our busy agenda this morning. We are going to continue on with our busy agenda this morning. The next one is a deed of easement authorization for the Rathbone Hotel. And this also, Jim Shid, you've got the next three also.
I do.
So here we go. What's going on with the deed of easement for the Rathbone Hotel?
Okay, so we're here to request you consider granting an access easement and a sewer easement, a city owned parcel for the adjacent property owner. So there's a map included in the packages for reference, but this is actually right across the street here at our old city hall. So the area just to the west of city hall that has been used for parking and seems like an alleyway, has been used as an alleyway and kind of right of way like for many, many years, is actually part of a city parcel. So it's not actually right of way. It's, it is part of the same lot that city hall sits on. So the adjacent property owner of the Rathbone Hotel is obviously going through renovation right now, and I think they're approaching the time they'll be opening, but are looking at formalizing some of the accesses and sewer line easements through what is that city parcel. So that's what they have requested here and detailed out through the deeds and the ordinances that are attached in the packet. And so ultimately, the, the access easement is for a back door on their building that opens onto what would be that city parcel. And this is an easement that formalizes their access point. It kind of secures it for them, and in the case of the city, it doesn't change much on our end, right? The area has been used as, as a right of way basically anyway. And there's a lot of other utilities in the area, so it's not likely that it would ever be constructed on or built over. So the easement doesn't necessarily change the use or the possibilities for that piece of property. But it makes their, the access to their back door of their hotel. It's an ADA access point that would allow for ingress and egress for, from an ADA standpoint, something that they needed to include in their design for just modern building practices within their building. And that door obviously was existing, but this, again, formalizes that access point. And then the sewer easement, which is.
Jim, sorry, one thing I'll add on the ADA access too. One thing that drove it being on the alley was the historic character. And so they looked at doing it on the front, but the state wanted to keep the character on the two facades. And so it drove that being, it's really close, so it's actually almost probably better access for ADA, but also preserved the historical character, which was a big part of that driver as well.
Yeah. And then sewer line easement, which is the other side of that, they are detailed out in the deeds, but I kind of highlighted that whole area as kind of like green stripe there that these, one easement would be or the other. The sewer line would be going towards the alley side, so from the building to the north. And it's replacing existing sewer line, which actually goes under their neighboring building to the north. So that's, you know, definitely not a best practice, has happened downtown probably more times than we know. But as, there's opportunities to fix that, we encourage it. And using areas like this to do it is, is supported. So again, it's just kind of formalizing what they would use to access that sewer main as an easement.
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is something we've always known we would probably have to do since the beginning of this project, and you're just bringing it to us really to, to formalize it now, right?
Yeah, I believe the design, you know, was only finalized here, several months, getting these deeds created and has taken some time as well. So I think, yes, it's been on our radar for, for quite some time. I don't think we were concerned about it because of the use of the, of the space anyway, being, which I think a lot of people probably thought was right of way.
Right.
And just throughout that design process, discovered that it's actually a city parcel. And so I don't think there was any concern whether this would be a deal breaker for the project, assuming that this was good use for this space anyway. So I think this is kind of just buttoning up the project and the easements, knowing that it's underway as we speak.
Formalizing. So in a similar vein, that this is like the exact same process that if, in discussing our prior project on the 1910 project, that if they chose to access from the building into the park, they would have to go through the same process. We would have the same kind of progress or process for putting an access door on that park side. So it's just kind of formalizing the, the right to use that as an access point.
Correct. Yeah.
But it's not changing the character or the, the use of that alleyway in any way.
Correct. Yeah, it just kind of secures it for them too, so that is, you know, that they can invest their money in the design of that to know that there can always be an access point there into the future.
If you have, I think it was in the Montrose Daily Press about two weeks ago, maybe a week ago, there was a picture in there. It was an older picture showing the building, the Pythian Building. And right next to it, if you look closer to the picture to the left, there was a house that was actually built up against. And the theater went in, I think, 1929, so the home was taken out prior to that. But there was quite an interesting picture in there when I talked with some folks in planning. They had seen it also and had some information on it.
I have a question. So granting an easement on our property, but that's property we currently have under contract for sale. So we, we're going to do this, and the property being under contract, how does that affect anything? Or do we just tell the purchaser, hey, meanwhile, we've added an easement?
So who we're under contract with is essentially, they're the same people. So if it does in fact get purchased by that, by Rathbone, easements, those easements will likely, and by likely, I mean, they just disappear because you can't have an easement on your own property to yourself.
Okay.
So the, the easement has to be owned by a different person.
Okay.
So if someone else were to purchase the building from city hall, from city, the easements would stay.
Okay.
The easements run with the land. It, it will be known to the purchaser. It comes, it'll be on any title report. These are recorded documents.
Sure. And, and, and yeah, it's under contract to the same people, but I, I don't, is it technically the exact same company? Or, you know, sometimes people put together different companies because they have different investors and different projects. So while it is the same guy, is it really the same company?
I, I don't know offhand.
Okay.
Obviously Ben was working more on that than I was. I wasn't the, so I don't know exactly if it's the same LLC.
Okay.
However.
But you answered my concerns.
Yes. So even if it is a, if it's a different LLC, then the easements run with the land.
Sure.
It's, it's not going to go anywhere.
Perfect.
But if it is the same person, poof, disappear.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Any other questions from council about this proposed easements, which would, is required in order to do it? You'll see there's multiple things we're going to end up voting on at upcoming meeting.
Yeah, that's right. So there'll likely be, there's two ordinances there, so this would, would come up as two items you would vote on, although it's over the same subject. So as we present that at the council meeting, it likely would be two items.
Okay.
Vote one presentation.
Correct. Yep.
Great. Okay, we can move on to the next item you've got on our agenda, which is a street light upgrade project year two authorization. Oh, we, I think we're pretty familiar, but let's hear it.
Yeah, this is a, one we've talked about recently, but we're, we're trying to get an early start this year. That's why it's coming up January 2nd. So this is a continuation of our MOU with DMEA for upgrading our existing old style streetlights, the mercury vapors and the high pressure sodiums to an LED fixture. We began this project in 2023, kind of initiating the project and getting our MOU established and getting through council meetings and DMEA board meetings. We started later in the year. It was mid-year before we really got a start. And that's why we're again here early to try to get this project started early in the year. It was quite an accomplishment. So DMEA did achieve the light replacements that we had in 2023, but it was very close. They were under quite a bit of pressure to get that completed by the end of the year. So we are again here just early trying to get this project started. It is a budgeted project within the 2024 budget, and the MOU is already in place. We are just authorizing the use of those budgeted funds to continue the project into 2024. It did include a couple of maps within, in the packet that show the area that was completed in 2023 and the area that we're moving to for 2024. And then we will kind of evaluate, see how that, this year goes, and then we'll make a, likely a proposal for 2025, moving the, the project forward. So any questions?
So on our priority list, we tend to prioritize major arterials first, then minor arterials, and then moving into residential, kind of on a tiered priority system.
Correct. Yeah. And usually by light type too, so that'll, that helps DMEA on their installation that they'll use a road type. So they'll be installing all the lights associated with that road type, and they'll do those, and then they'll move into a different, like they'll move into residential.
So the road type is a different type of fixture and type of light.
Correct. Yep.
And some of the new developments that we've done in the last couple of years, are they putting in the new lights in those that begin with?
Yes. Yeah. So they're, yeah, as we're installing new lights with those through development or other, they're, they're adhering to this street lighting plan for the most part.
And we have already seen monthly electrical savings on these lights.
Yep.
The ones that have been installed so far.
Starting to see that effect now. Most of that work was done in December, so it's, it's like right now.
Okay.
But yes, a lot of work was done. So a lot was accomplished right in the last part of 2023. And yeah, so that effect for cost savings is starting to roll in now.
Great.
So when we were, when we were looking at that cost savings, that it looks like over the course of the project, two years, we will recoup the cost on that, just on electrical savings.
Yeah, it's just over two years return on investment. So it was like a 2.3, I believe, was the actual number on that. But yeah, so very quick.
That's an amazing turnaround.
We anticipate this taking probably a four year span to do all, the whole city, but we'll start to see that return, yeah, a little over two years into it.
That's exciting.
That's great. And I'll, I'll just answer my own question I asked before, which is, well, then why don't we just do them all right now? And it's just the capacity of DMEA to go through and change all those, and so we budget and work through a couple of years.
Yep. And we saw that this last year, like I said, I think we found kind of that limit of what is possible to do in a short amount of time. Like again, we kind of pressured DMEA to get that done, and they did. They did great. But yeah, I think they'll be happy to hear they have all year.
This time.
Yeah.
They're a great partner. I'm glad to see them helping us with this. Okay, I don't think there's any other questions. We look forward to giving that our stamp of approval at a future council meeting. Next up, 2024 vehicle and equipment purchase recommendation.
All right.
This is you and our fleet superintendent.
Yeah. So yeah, I'll introduce Shane Branties here in the back somewhere as a kind of the master mind behind all of this, but I'll, I'll be happy to talk through it. And if you guys have any questions that stump me, I will look at Shane. So this is our, our annual large vehicle and equipment purchase. We, we try to package all this up into, into one, so that doesn't consume several meetings because there are a lot of different purchases being made here, all of which are budgeted in one way or another. And again, I try to get one package out. And actually, it takes quite a lot to get this all procured in sequence to allow this all to come together at once. But again, Shane, kind of the mastermind behind that strategy. And, and again, I'll summarize where we're at with the overall, but if there's anything specific you want us to dive into and explain further, we're happy to do that. So the total that we're looking, we're asking for authorization for is just over 2 million, so it's two point, or 2,87,431 dollars and 64 cents. This is for 10 different vehicle type purchases, and those are listed out in the packet. Altogether, that, that is 16 different pieces of equipment that are just packaged into 10 different types. And as a reminder, replacement vehicles, which are included in this, are budgeted through our fleet fund. Additional purchases are budgeted through the division's budget that is adding that vehicle, and these different include both of those. And we often use different types of procurement for purchasing vehicles, and, and it depends on the vehicle type, their availability, cooperative purchasing agreements, things like that. So we do probably use cooperative purchasing agreements the most when it comes to vehicles, and you'll see in the packet, there's several of them. And as a reminder, that's when a, in a previously awarded RFP has gone to a vendor, and they entered into an agreement to allow that same award to be given to other government agencies. And then we're able to piggyback in a way on those previously awarded bids to a different government agency. And we qualify for that because of, because we're a municipality, and when it comes to vehicles, it's, we take advantage of that. It is a, a great opportunity for us to use that kind of government pricing of sorts on vehicles. We use RFPs, which are quite common for lots of projects, but this is when I'm looking for things that are qualification of some, some sort, like references or experience in constructing, I would say a trash truck is a good example, though we would like somebody with experience in, in selling and creating trash trucks before we would buy one. Invitation for bids, those are where something that's still more simple, that is a really clean, easy spec, that we're looking for just price, and we're less interested in, in the qualifications. We use sole source waivers as well, and that's when viewed as special condition or an availability issue, in that we would use sole source waiver for purchasing vehicles. And then also auctions, which we don't use that every year, but this year would be one we're, we're recommending that on one used bucket truck, actually, on the list. And in some cases, that's the most cost-effective way for a vehicle type that's new to our fleet or that isn't gonna use a high amount of hours, we recommend using, purchasing a used vehicle. And we've done that again on a few cases in the last several years with success. I think they've been, they've turned out very well. It's just not very often, I would say, I think of three in the time that I've been with the city, so very low percentage. And on the overall budget standpoint, if we're looking at the, the totals, which again, were included kind of in the summary of the packet, we, we have made adjustments on how we budget for equipment and vehicles. I think we, we do learn, you know, those last few years have taught us something, in that we've made some adjustments to the way we collect through our fleet fund and then the way we budget for those, less reliant on quotes we received last year. We're finding that those don't often work as well as the amount that we had collected over time. And so on the overall amounts, if we look at how the overall impact to the fleet fund and to the city budget, we, they're quite favorable. We did quite well this year, we're under budget in both cases. So impact of all the purchases to the fleet fund, we would be under budget by a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. And then the impact to the, the city budgets or, you know, the additional vehicles, we are under budget by a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So good news on both accounts, I think, again, making some of those small adjustments has helped us in that staying under budget rather than being surprised and, and trying to come up with how we pay for them at this time. So I think we, those have been successful. And then again, all the vehicles are listed out in the packet, and all the different procurement methods we use for each one. I'd be happy to dive into any of them if you have any questions, but there's quite the list, so I didn't want to start there and spend hours on it.
One question I have was a, kind of a specificity of, a rough mower, is it?
Yeah, type of mower at the golf course, I believe, right?
Just a general mowing the fairways, kind of, not the, yeah, the rough.
I think it's the golf course, right? Is that what that one was?
Yeah.
I believe so.
Yeah, it's for the golf course.
Yeah.
Just a general purpose, one of the big multi-deck mowers, yeah.
Jim, how do we, how do you see the availability of the items that we'll be purchasing, is that it still gonna be along?
Still, you know, it's better, I'd say it's better than the last few years, things seem to be coming together. Some of our vehicles have been delivered on a reasonable amount of time again, kind of, I would say, almost returning to the way it was pre-COVID. Some of the more specialty equipment trash trucks are still a problem. We're, I still, I'd say it's getting better, though. We are getting more responses, more people interested in bidding on them, so that's better. Still not as, they're not as committed to giving us delivery dicks.
I was thinking about the street sweeper, if we're.
You know, street sweepers, I know that they're talking to us, responding, I don't remember the lead times on those, but you, Shane, remember the lead time on sweepers?
No.
Yeah, it wasn't extensive. I want to say, you know, I'd say a year, which is reasonable. When we get the two-plus years, that's when we're a little more concerned. If they say they're relatively available within a year, that's, that's pretty good. So I'd say it's, it's good news that things are improving. There's still challenges within that, that when, when a vehicle needs to be assembled, again, a trash truck being that example, that has been a little bit more difficult.
Doesn't look there are any other questions, so I'll wrap us up by saying this is fantastic. Kudos to you and to Shane. And it's really, it's almost overwhelming, except that we all have been on council for over a year at this point, and so seeing all of the purchases in one, it feels like somebody's term paper that you've put together here. And it does, I, I think, you know, in the future, for perhaps when there's new council members, you might want to meet with them individually, because you went over a lot of really key things. I remember when you were first trying to explain those different ways to procure vehicles to me. And it's so great to see it all in one condensed thing, but it might be too much for a new council member, if you might just want to think about that in the future of going with them one-on-one. But for us, I think having it all in one big presentation and all of the different ways you're buying the vehicles, kudos, it's, it's a great report.
Okay.
Okay. Next up would be the twenty twenty-four annual annexation report and three-mile plan. I'll turn this over to our planning manager, Jase Hockwell.
Good morning, council. I'll make this quick. I know that there's some staff reports as well as an executive session, so I'll have a more detailed presentation for the public tonight. I just want to say that there's really not a whole lot of changes from, quite frankly, the last couple of years on this. One thing to mention is that this annexation report and the three-mile plan in general are statutory requirements, and it has to take place, we have to basically implement and adopt this prior to any new properties annexed in twenty twenty-four. We have an annexation coming this evening. That is the reason we expedited this and got it on the first meeting, so.
Great, and so you, I think, can give, like you said you would, a little more explanation tonight, and that way the public can see it prior, can also get that information.
I will, and if you want me to go into just two minutes of detail, I can, but I can just skip through it.
I don't think you need to now, you know, like you said, we have a lot already on our agenda this morning, and we're all gonna be riveted if it's the first time we've heard it tonight.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to staff reports. It looks like we've got one on the agenda, and then as always, I'll open it up to any staff who have something they want to let us know about or talk about. But the agenda'd staff report is public works, no operations, and website update, and this is Jim Ashide and our street superintendent, Nick Pridey.
Hang on, one second, we're trying to get connected to the screen real quick, but yes.
What was the name of that program again?
I'm sorry. We'll get us started, we'll get connected.
Okay, no, this is great, because the public, I mean, always wants to know.
Yeah, so we're, we're here to talk about snow and ice, and yeah, we've been doing the snow dance, trying to get some down here, and you know, there actually is snow in the forecast, so we're hopeful that we'll get to put all of this to, to practice here, here shortly. But there's just been several updates, ordinances, MOUs, things that have happened in the world of snow and ice, and so we wanted to give a brief overview of that and then also show off our website a little bit. There's been some updates there, we really feel like it's a, a really good tool, we refer a lot of people to it. So we wanted to do a kind of a, a run through that real quick with council and, and explain what's there. But I will, I will hand this over to Nick. He's been, again, kind of the mastermind behind this and has really progressed our snow and ice removal programs forward and the website. So with that, I'll, I'll hand it off to him and let him explain.
Well, good morning, council. It's a pleasure to be here. Busy start to the new year. Glad to see all the new projects and wheels turning early in the year. So we've included a memo in the packet. I'm just gonna breeze over this quickly. I really wanted to get to the website and kind of go over some of the, the bigger changes that we've done on the website itself. This is the first year that we're gonna have a formal snow and ice control policy. Earlier this year, we drafted that, and we brought that to you. It came with a lot of different ordinances, a few different changes there. Mainly, it's for contractors, we wanna, we wanted to highlight, you know, not, not piling snow on the right away, things of that nature. We also just wanted a, a in-stone policy that we can fall back on. That kind of comes back to being transparent with the public, something that we can put on our website and, and just have a good fallback to budget and technological advancements. We're actually still waiting on two of our new plow trucks to get here, unfortunately. We were really looking forward to those being here at the, the start of the snow season. Luckily, we haven't had a, really anything going on this year, which is great for us, and we've been able to focus on some, some other stormwater mitigation plans that we have. But we've also been using mag chloride pretty heavily. We've got a new spot treatment truck that we've been using. That's a, that's been a great addition to us. It's really enhanced our operations, and we're kind of looking forward to being able to further utilize that. It's a direction that we were actually following the state in, they've, they moved heavily into that, so we're looking to continue that as well. Did want to talk about some of our common anti-and de-icing practices that we currently use. Right now, we're just using a solid granular salt. We mix that with an aggregate, just to give a little bit added traction. That helps us because we can make the, the mix in-house, we can design it to whatever the storm is, is, is panning out to be. The, the magnesium chloride that we use, we have a lot of misconceptions about that, we get a lot of questions in regards to that, so I wanted to just briefly talk about that. This is actually a product that is used by our local DOT, and it's one of the only products that's, that's approved by the DOT. I think it gets a bad rap from a, a salt brine. You see that used back east very heavily, so they're actually taking a rock salt and they're mixing it with water, and then that's being sprayed directly onto the ground. That's gonna be like a sodium chloride, and that's not something that we use here. Magnesium chloride is a, is a much different chemical, is, is significantly less corrosive for vehicles and infrastructure than sodium chloride is. Quick staffing overview for us, so for the first time in a while, we have been whole almost all year, and it's been great. It's, I'm glad to see a lot of new guys sticking around and hanging through kind of those, those tough first months of getting trained and learning all the nuances to this job, but we're glad to see that. We actually have almost entire, the entire staff of fifteen employees are brand new. We have one employee that's been here for thirty-six years, so we're still glad to have him around. He's shedding a lot of, a lot of knowledge in all the new guys, so we're, we're great, we're very happy to have him. I also want to talk about community feedback, so we all received a recent update from David Spear on our community survey results for twenty twenty-three. I don't think we've had that since twenty sixteen was the last one, but we did see a, a five percent increase in customer satisfaction for snow removal on city streets. So that was great to see, and we're looking to continue that. Next, I wanted to just bring up the website and show you guys some changes that we've made on there. I wanted to start by thanking David Spear for this, that guy is great. You can give him a slew of information and expect to have a long, drawn-out conversation, but he's, he's able to get it done within, you know, ten minutes, so it's great to have him on board. Front and center, we wanted to make a really bold, at least give a cool picture, of course, for the, the public to see, and we also wanted to include a, a frequently asked question area for the public to go. We didn't have that before, and so I kind of took last year and compiled the, the most questions that I get throughout the year, and I wanted to make that front and center on the page. Additionally, we have a few different maps here, so we wanted to be really transparent with the public and provide all of our routes. Those are things that we work on every year coming into the snow season to update. So we'll go ahead and bring one of these up just to briefly look over it. So this is our new updated map for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four season. Now, when we're, when we're, when we're updating this, there's a lot that goes into it. We want to sit down with CDOT, we want to sit down with the county, all those adjacent municipalities or other entities we work closely with, and you know as well as I do, the, the city limits is not always super even when it comes to roadways. We'll have half of a roadway that belongs to the county and half that belongs to the city. We, we really want to sit down with the county and make sure that, you know, we iron those things out ahead of time, get those different routes either traded or swapped with them. That way, we are doing things as efficiently as possible. So it was a pleasure to sit down this year with my counterpart over at Montrose County Road and Bridge, and we did a lot of swapping there. I'll kind of come back to that, that main map here in a second. I did want to at least showcase this, this trade that we did with the county. So we never really come at it with an intent to be perfect on what we trade off, it's, it's really more for an operator standpoint, like, hey, let's make sure that these, these guys have a solid route that is like a big circle for them or something that's easy for them to, to actually perform, so they're not turning around in the middle of the street, right? And then being able to blame it on, on another entity. But we came really, really close this year, I mean, almost, almost exact, which was awesome. So the intent behind this was really to get a lot of the interior stuff that fell interior to the city and were already attached to another route, keep that in, in city, whether it was going to be, you know, if it was a county road, and some of these farther out roads that happen to be in city limits, trading those out to the county. So we did, that did come with an MOU, we made that, I think it was up to three years renewable, but we'll, every year, we'll sit down with them and make sure we renew that. Nothing changed with CDOT this year, so I'll go back to this map. We are still under the same, we actually updated the maintenance agreement, but it, at this time, we, you know, we didn't want to really expand where the city's maintenance responsibilities ended. I think in future, there could be a conversation of us maybe going all the way to Target, just not at this time now. So we, we still are maintaining from San Juan Avenue to Wendy's, that's it, that's one that we get a lot of questions on. CDOT will take over past that. But just to clarify, Olive Towns Avenue is a CDOT road, and we just have a maintenance room with them. So we, we try to maintain it to a little bit higher standard than CDOT would, and so that's, that's why we go out of our way to do that. Let's go back to the website here. Another thing that we work on updating every year is sidewalk and trails route map. So our parks division, really hard this year on getting this updated and getting a few new trails added in here, but we also wanted to add this on the, on just the yearly update to this website, making sure that this map is as up-to-date as possible and we get everything added in here. One area in particular that we did want to focus on was our downtown snow removal map. So we always rely on the adjacent property owner to maintain their sidewalk adverse conditions. We, we felt that it was sort of unreasonable in a, in a downtown area, so we have, within a block you're gonna have between, you know, ten or fifteen business owners, it would be hard to ask each one of them to maintain their ten-foot sidewalk in front of their, in front of their business. And it really didn't really, you know, we, we wanted our downtown to just have a little bit higher standard anyways, so we, we've decided that, you know, internally, we will be removing the snow in this, in this area, but we wanted to make sure that there's a map, map on here that clearly defined that. I don't have a whole lot of other input on that, I think Jim or Dan will, would be a better resource for that. But we also wanted to include a link to our new, our new policy. We wanted to make sure that that was front and center on here, so it's transparent, people can come on here, they can, they can read through it. Another thing that we put on here, this will probably get removed eventually, but we wanted to highlight a big, a big portion of what the policy actually changed. And we took this actually from a memo that I had written out to contractors, so kind of in that October timeframe. We wanted to get a memo out to all of our local contractors that we knew that we're working in the downtown area, removing snow, just to give them a heads-up of some of these different changes, so they knew what was really gonna be expected of them and what they needed to prep their, their customers on. Other than that, that's, that's really what we wanted to just give you guys an update on and, and hope that you authorize some more snow to come, because we're, we're actually kind of missing it right now.
So for our downtown sidewalks, what do you use to remove the snow downtown?
Typically, it's, it's a small motor vehicle. If we can fit a four-wheeler on there, we will. There's not a lot of room right now, so most of the time, it's handsheling, fortunately. But what we're doing with that snow, just to kind of further elaborate on that and give a better level of service downtown, we're trying to get all that snow early in the morning put into the parking spaces, and then plows are also plowing that snow from the roadway into the parking spaces, and then we have a DEMA dedicated team that's working on piling that into one central area and then hauling it all off, all within the same storm.
Fantastic, great work. Look forward to on the first snow, social media blasting this out with help. You know, so, so it's all ready to go, it's there, people can look at it now, but you know, they won't really want to look at it until the first morning they wake up to snow.
Yep.
Speaking of, when we wake up to snow, are you still gonna be sending emails out to our community partners, talking about road conditions and plowing activity? And like when I say community partners, I mean the hospitals, you were doing that in the past.
Yep, yep, so we've kind of, we've actually updated that mailing list to be a little bit more robust. We've gotten a few more contacts, some of the high-priority entities that are in there, but yes, we, we plan on continuing as a, a lot of people appreciate it.
That's great. And then hopefully, with our new ordinances, it's just a matter of communicating to contractors what they need to do, but are we working internally with our police department, what if they don't? Because there are now some real straightforward ramifications to that.
Yeah, and I think that was actually part of the reason we wanted to come, why, why that policy came, was ordinance changes. We wanted to at least have a way to actually enforce that. Of course, we, we want to be pretty lenient, right, to begin with, but I, I think there is now at least an avenue that we can use to actually enforce that.
Great, okay.
I just have something to say, is that if you read the old farmers' home and act, they're not particularly much weathered here in this area, other than cold.
Yeah.
And so that's the, not in much snow for the city is good, but for the residents in this area, it sounds like it.